Signed in, if you signed in, you got a button. So, you know, I'm happy that you're joining us for BNA Black Ballot Week. Uh, one main piece of the work that we're doing during Black Ballot Week is making sure people can make educated and informed decisions when they go to the ballot box in April, in August. And then also, we want to make sure people actually go and vote and understand how important the local elections are. Y'all feel that? That sound good to y'all? We in church, y'all can say amen if you rocking with it. Alright, so I think we're gonna get started again. I'm Erica Perry with the Black Nashville Assembly. Extremely excited to welcome y'all to our first in our series of candidate forums for the Black Nashville Assembly Black Ballot Week. Uh, before I really kick it off and tell y'all a little bit about the Black Nashville Assembly and what we got going on this week, I want to invite, um, and really, you know, as he comes to thank Pastor Mar before allowing us to come into this, uh, really sacred space, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we certainly are excited about the potential, uh, of continuing to work with the Assembly and the importance of the church still being a very active and present place in the space for this black political agenda. The black church historically has always been a place of meeting, a place of organizing, a place of strategy, a place of prayer and revival for the type of movements this organization is trying to build. Uh, and it's going to take both the community and the church, uh, to make the type of progress we need in our city happen. Uh, we cannot forsake one another. We've got to join together with one another, and that's across generations, that's across faith traditions, uh, that is across many lines, uh, that, uh, we need to come together. So Jefferson Street is excited to be a part and to be able to host just a few housekeeping notes. We're live streaming on Jefferson Street's YouTube page and Facebook page. Uh, so if you can help us amplify this message by going on your phone now to Facebook or YouTube and helping to share that link, uh, so that we get as much folks as possible engaged and interested in the conversation. Restrooms are out of the sanctuary and to the left, uh, the men's and the women's room, so you can have that information as well. And we appreciate, can we celebrate this team and what they're doing for our city? And, um, before we get started, I do want to acknowledge, uh, there's some clergy here. Dr. Judy Cummings is here. I want to acknowledge, uh, Pastor Harold Love, Dr. Love as well, and the other elected officials that are here. Want to acknowledge them and thank them for their presence as well.
Thank you so much. Uh, again, thank you again to Pastor Marv on Jefferson Street Missionary Baptist Church. Uh, protocol already being established. If you know, you know. Again, I'm Erica Perry with the Black Nashville Assembly, uh, and super excited to welcome you to BNA Black Ballot Week. Um, in 2020, we really started, um, during the uprisings, uh, the George Floyd and Breonna Taylor uprisings. A little bit prior to that, recognizing that, you know, black folks have been encouraged to vote on a consistent basis, but yet not, had not yet been organized, right? Organized around a political agenda, organized to use political engagement and voting as a tool to meet our needs. And so, over the last three years, we've developed a political agenda with a number, with a series of assemblies, uh, public safety workshops, mass meetings, surveys, uh, we knocked on doors, we've held small conversations in order to really see what the issues are in our community and then determine what those solutions are. And so together, we developed a bold, black, and radical political agenda. And when we say radical, I hope y'all know what I mean. Maybe you studied Ella Baker. Any of y'all studied Ella Baker? Yeah, good, good, good. And so Ella Baker talks about radical and getting to the root of the problem. So, um, and the work that we've attempted to do is really get to the root of, of the homelessness issue in our community, displacement in our, in our, in our community, uh, harm in our community, um, lack of quality education in our community through a, uh, through a bold political agenda. And so I hope that you'll join us in reading that political agenda and really pushing forward, uh, transformative policies and programs that will begin to help implement policies that can rebuild our community. That sound good to y'all? Beautiful. Okay, and so I just wanna, um, just wanna name a few things before we get started. And so we have candidates from District One, uh, Two, and Twenty-One. And so, so, so grateful for y'all for joining us, the candidates, and so you'll hear from them in a few minutes. Um, but just the way it'll work is, um, the way that we've been really working on this is making sure that we are bringing people together to engage in conversation and practice participatory democracy. And so we'll have candidate forums. We have this one today. We have, uh, the mayoral candidate forum on June, uh, Third at Pleasant Green Baptist Church, right down the street. And then we'll have a ju-, uh, candidate forum on June Eighth, where we'll also be in conversation with candidates in South Nashville and at-large candidates. The other thing during Black Ballot Week is that we'll be speaking at the budget hearing. So the budget is something that we've been organizing around for a number of years, really fighting for a people's budget. This year doesn't change anything. We're going again, asking for fully funded education. That sound good to y'all? Good, good, good. Okay, and so, um, and so I wanted to name that, and then we'll end with Assembly on June Tenth that we invite folks to register for as, as well. And so I want to just name some of the objectives of the candidate forum. We want to determine the policies and programs that, um, North Nashville candidates support. Oftentimes, folks again are just voting really without have, making informed decisions. So we want to get really granular about what policies candidates are supporting and getting behind. We also want to see how North Nashville candidates align with the political agenda that we've developed over the last three years. And then lastly, we want to provide an opportunities for voters to get informed about who was on the ballot, right? And so we've been talking to people, and I'm like, do you know who's running for office in your district? Do you even know what district you live in? And so we want to make sure people, one, know what district they live in, and two, know where they can vote. Um, and so just before we get started, I want to walk us through kind of how it's gonna go, and then I'm gonna invite my friend Denzel to talk to us about what city council does, so people know what's in the, um, what, what is actually in alignment with what's possible for city council members to engage in. Um, so we'll have candidates, uh, well, we only have, I think, uh, District Two has one candidate running, so we'll have her here, and then we'll have, um, the two folks running in District Twenty-One, and then we'll have the five people running in District, um, One come up. And so the first two will get twenty minutes, and then the District One will get forty minutes because they have five people running in their, in their position. And so we'll give each candidate sixty seconds for an opening, uh, ninety seconds to answer the questions. And then, you know, because we really wanted people to be able to talk about what they really believe in and what they really support, we're giving candidates thirty seconds to respond or rebuttal, um, something that another candidate may be said that they may or may not agree with. And then we also want to make sure, um, if another candidate says something directly about, uh, another candidate on the panel, they get thirty seconds again to, to respond to that. And then we'll end with a sixty-second closing on why we should vote for this particular candidate. Um, and so the other thing I'll name is that we have two friends who will give folks note cards. We'll get white note cards if you have questions, so you'll be able to raise your hand. Uh, Brandon and Trey, if you could raise your hand so folks can know. When you raise your hand because you have questions, you'll get note cards from Trey and, uh, Brandon, and, um, then we'll be able to ask those questions that way. I already see a few people up front who have questions they want to write down, and so they'll hand them to me, and I'll make sure those questions get asked. So thank you so much for, you know, your participation in that way. So next, I want to invite Denzel to talk to us a little bit about what city council does, so we can be clear about, uh, what should we thinking about asking from our candidates. Thank you so much, Denzel.
Alright, y'all, good evening. Alright, my name is Denzel. I'm an organizer with the Black Nashville Assembly, um, and I'm just gonna take a few moments to talk a little bit about why we are here. Um, part of our work, uh, in building a participatory democracy as a Black Nashville Assembly requires us to equip our people with the neat, with the information and knowledge they need to fully participate in a democracy. If we don't have our people who are equipped to understand how current structures work, how can we then be self-determined to create the structures we want to see in the future, right? And so with that being said, part of that work includes civics education, right? We have to know how these current structures work. And so for tonight, we are talking about, um, city council, uh, representatives or city council candidates that are running for office. And so really quickly, just for the sake of making sure that everyone has the same level of information as we go into our, uh, forum, um, I just want to talk a little bit about what the city council does. So for those who may or may not know, we have three branches of government. We have the executive branch that enforces the laws. We have the legislative branch that creates the laws, and we have the judicial branch that interprets the laws. And so tonight, given that the city council is representative on the local level of our legislative branch, they are responsible for making the laws for Metro, uh, Nashville Davidson County. Um, and so what we have, um, we have a, uh, metro government of Nashville Davidson County. Um, we have forty members, um, and that is thirty-five elected by district, some of which you'll, uh, the candidates you'll hear tonight, uh, to hear why, uh, we should vote for them. Um, and we have five elected, uh, countywide or at-large representatives. Um, and so you should be seeing those candidates as well, um, as the election progresses. Um, and so I just want to touch a little bit on some of the powers that they have, just so that when you're asking questions and you're thinking through things like the budget or some of the, uh, voting decisions that they make, you'll be precise, right? Um, so some of those powers include, uh, being able to review and approve budgets, um, so the city budget, um, to establish tax rates. Um, I know folks may have questions around tax rates, uh, but they establish tax rates. Um, when they are voting and, uh, they pass a law, and let's say the mayor wants to veto that with two-thirds majority, they're able to override that veto. They're also able to borrow money on behalf of the, of the city or the Metro Nashville Davidson County. Um, and they're also able to pass ordinances or resolutions. And so I just wanted to give you a little bit of that grounding tonight over what the city council, um, and each of the representatives are able to do, so that, that you can be precise in the questions that you want to ask, um, this body that makes the laws. Um, and so with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and get it kicked off. I'm gonna pass it to, uh, my brother Floss.
Thank y'all. Okay, what's up, y'all? How y'all feeling right now? Everybody good? When I say people, you say power. People. 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 Okay, okay, so we alive in the room right now. Everybody's, everybody's alive and well, paying attention, locked in, not sleepy. You know, I used to go to church a lot, more than I, I do now, but, but you know, sometimes you get sleepy sitting in them comfortable cues, so I just want to make sure everybody's up and awake. Um, at this time, we want to invite District One, uh, candidate Quante Toons to the stage. District Two, I'm sorry, District Two, which is my district. Clap it up, clap it up. Some water there for you if you need it. But yeah, we're gonna dive right into it. Um, so we have, just to reiterate, um, sixty-second opening here, and tell us why you're running for city council.
Good evening. My name is Quante Toons. I represent District Two, which if you don't know, that is part of North Nashville, some of Bordeaux, the Hanes Trinity area, along with, uh, some of East Nashville, along Dickerson Pike up to Broly Parkway. Uh, when I, this is my first term. When I ran, I ran on equity, affordability, and safety. Equity was bringing some of the economic development that we had seen in other parts of the district, uh, other parts of the city into the district, but doing it so in an affordable way, in a way that protected historic and, uh, established neighborhoods. And the, the safety component was not just public safety, but safety in walking about our neighborhood, so it was bringing about infrastructure improvements to the district. And over the past four years, I've done everything that I said that I would do. I know there's a lot more work to do, and so I want to continue doing that work.
Okay, and for the following questions, you have ninety seconds to respond. What are your general thoughts around the Black Nashville Assembly's black political agenda?
So generally speaking, and, and I'll admit, I don't know every point of the political agenda for the Black Nashville Assembly. Uh, I support, obviously, uh, black political power, representing a majority African-American district. I support, uh, economic development for African-Americans. I support African-Americans, uh, participating and benefiting from the economic development that we've seen in, in other parts of the city. Uh, I support African-Americans having, uh, political power that they perhaps have not experienced over the, the past decades in Nashville. I know District Two is one of the most neglected, uh, districts in the city, and so I've been working hard over the past four years to make sure that there's equity, uh, in District Two.
Okay, um, so the Black Nashville Assembly's political agenda's three priorities are housing, education, and public safety. So we're gonna get into those three a little bit here. Um, so we don't fully have, if we could turn the mic down just a little bit, we got feedback on the stage. But we don't fully have fully funded education in Metro Nashville public schools. Many of the students in our youth assembly go to those schools, and they've told us how classes and programs are getting cut. So how can the Metro Council ensure that we get a place where education is fully funded by our public dollars?
So for the past two budget seasons, Metro Council has fully funded MMPS's budget request. Actually, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two, I was the chair of budget and finance, and we not only fully funded their budget requests, but we funded them three million dollars over that. Uh, MMPS's budget is over a billion dollars. The majority of that is funded through the Metro Council. When you talk about the underfunding of schools, what, and I've clarified this with MMPS administration, is that you're looking at how the state funds schools. Uh, because Metro is considered to have higher financial capacity, we are made to make up what the state should be paying for. So right now, the state pays about twenty-one percent of MMPS's budget, and the city makes up the difference, and we make up that difference every year and half successfully for the past, uh, two ye-, two, uh, budget seasons. Whereas if you look at the calculation that the state should be using, they should be funding MMPS at about forty percent, uh, but that's, that's not the case. And I know there are some schools that have more needs than others, and I think that that's a, a conversation that needs to be had at the school level, because MMPS actually uses school-based budgeting, whereas they push out the majority of their money to the individual schools, and those principals set their budgets for the schools. So if there's something, uh, other than a capital need that a school is needing, that really needs to be a conversation that starts with the principal of that school.
So base, okay, I hear you saying that the city council has fully funded the public schools. What is that allocation per student for a public school student?
So I know for the past two, uh, budget seasons, that has been roughly, I believe, like eleven thousand or so dollars per student. With this current proposed budget from the mayor, there is a hundred million in additional dollars, which fifty, about fifty-five million of that is for them to continue the status quo, and then there's enough, more money on top of that. And I believe from the presentation from MMPS, that's gonna increase the per pupil spending to about fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so in regard to housing, um, District Two, we know is a major, a place where a lot of folks, um, used to live, don't live there anymore. Just on my street, I've seen a black family head to leave, and they building houses on my street, um, and people from out of town are moving in. Um, for a lot of us, displacement for black and brown and working-class families is something we're experiencing. So what are some ways we can slow profit-driven redevelopment in District Two?
May I ask what your street is?
Uh, we can, I'll tell you after.
No problem, no problem. So in, in District Two, my development strategy has been to concentrate development along the major corridors. So you've got West Trinity Lane, Clarksville Highway, Brick Church Pike, a little bit on White's Creek Pike, a little bit on, on Baptist World Center, as well as Dickerson Pike. And so the majority of development is concentrated on those major corridors, because we need the rooftops to drive the economic, economic development, to drive the amenities that people are wanting to see. And so the rooftops are concentrated on those major corridors. And then with your established and historic neighborhoods, you don't see as, as much development. Uh, sometimes people can do what their property is owned for, and that does, uh, you'll see some development in those neighborhoods, because people are doing what their property is owned for. But for the most part, in District Two, the development is concentrated along those major corridors. And if you attend my community meetings, you know that the community is actually actively, actively involved in a lot of those development projects and are able to get additional, uh, benefits, uh, with those, those projects that come along.
Okay, and when are those meetings?
So I have a monthly community meeting every fourth Tuesday of every month, except July and December, six P.M., um, at the North Precinct. Pre-COVID, I used to go around, uh, the district, but once COVID hit and we go, went back to in-person, the North Precinct allows me to have hybrid meetings, so people can participate via Zoom, Facebook Live, or in-person. And then also, when there are rezonings, I often have one or two additional meetings per month.
So it's at the North Police Precinct every fourth?
Every fourth Tuesday at six o'clock.
Okay, um, so we know public safety is a big issue in our community, where police violence, um, has something to also do with community harm. What are some policies and programs that you would implement that can foster public safety and implement community-driven forms of safety?
So one of the things that, uh, we've looked at as, as council members is looking at alternatives to policing. So you have the Partners in Care Program, which partners a, an officer with a, uh, mental health professional. Uh, you also have the new REACH program that's gonna partner a mental health professional with a, with a EMT, uh, person. There's also, uh, with the North Precinct Commander, he has a new community safety, uh, a new community safety committee, advisory committee, where different community members are meeting on a bimonthly basis to discuss, discuss concerns within the community. I also have the North Precinct and the East Precinct Commander to come, uh, to the monthly meetings to answer questions from the community, to establish that relationship, so they feel comfortable asking questions and going to, uh, those persons. And also, you know, funding nonprofits that support youth programs and funding different city initiatives that are, that are aimed towards youth to put some more resources into the community.
So we talk about this in the Black Nashville Assembly often, um, because a lot of times we hear from elected officials, alternatives to policing, but those alternatives always end up involving the police. So in which you're telling me is partnering a mental health professional with a police officer is a form of alternative to policing. Can you, can you explain that contradiction a little bit more to us?
So I think it's an alternative policing because it's an alternative to arrest. So that's when I think of alternatives to policing, where people come in, you've committed an offense, you get arrested. So what's the alternative to just arresting people and putting them in jail? So the Partners in Care Program, by partnering with a mental health professional, they're actually addressing the issue, which is the person is in a mental health crisis. And so from the data that I've seen, only three percent of those encounters have, uh, resulted in arrests. And then we have the REACH program that has just started where there are no police. It's a mental health professional and an EMT professional.
So more so alternatives to arrest, not so much alternative to police involvement?
Right, and, and I'll say that in my district, the majority, uh, when, if I were to list the top five requests that I get, in that top five is more police patrols, uh, more police presence. Like, people are warning for, for pretty much every infraction, if they, if they don't feel comfortable in their neighborhoods, they see some suspicious activity, can the police do more patrols? People are speeding, can the police do more patrols? And so, yes, so it is an alternative to just arresting people for every infraction. It's looking at alternatives to address what's, what's the root cause of, of the infraction.
Okay, and before we get into our audience questions, um, hopefully they're being collected at this time, but, um, and you can close sixty seconds. Why should we vote for you?
So again, when I ran in twenty-nineteen, I ran on equity, affordability, and safety. I think that I have done a, a good job of bringing economic development to the district. We're starting to see some of the things that we see in, in other parts of the city in terms of amenities. We have some new businesses that are coming to the area. We have improved infrastructure. We've seen more investment to the tune of tens of millions of dollars than we've seen in District Two in decades. Uh, we have improved, uh, again, the, the infrastructure in the area. Uh, I think I've done a good job of balancing the, the for-profit, uh, development, uh, against more affordable, and affordable has different, uh, meanings to different people. So I like to say attainable housing, so everything is not for-market, uh, development. We have some workforce, several workforce development projects in, in the district. And again, I've done what I said I would do, and I want to keep doing it, keep building.
We'll take audience questions at this time.
Also, if folks, um, have questions that they, um, haven't yet given to Trey or Brandon, please just raise your hand so that he can get them.
Okay, uh, our first question. The police killed someone having a mental health crisis this year in North Nashville and last year. How can we, sorry, I'm trying to read the handwriting. How can we invert the, uh, invest in the mental health response?
So with the Partners in Care, um, program, we have expanded that to two additional precincts, so it's in seven of the nine precincts. So continuing to invest in that program, because again, that has resulted in, um, less than three percent in arrests, and I don't believe that there's been any fatality where a mental health professional was on a call with an officer. Also, in the new REACH program, where there is no officer, uh, that's a pilot that has just begun. So following that and making sure they have the resources that they need to be effective, and then once we get that data back, which I'm sure it will be positive, because this program has worked in other cities, uh, investing more resources in it.
And where does that investment come from?
It comes from the city's budget.
Okay. What are your views on Gideon's Army and what shaped these views?
So, uh, full transparency, I, I went to college with the founder of Gideon's Army. I'm not gonna say when that was, but we go way back. Um, and so I think that Gideon's Army does a, a good job in the community with violence interruption. I know they also have some other programs where they work with youth in the community, and from what I've seen over the past over ten years, uh, have been positive results for the community.
It says, if elected, would you, could you support Gideon's Army and why?
I, I support Gideon's Army now, uh, so currently working on a, a violence interruption pilot for North Nashville. Um, the mayor's community safety advisory committee, and I could be, um, misspeaking when I'm giving you the name, but Gideon's Army was one of the org, two organizations selected for grant funds. And so I am still working with the Department of Health to outline what that program looks like, but I support Gideon's Army now and plan to continue to do so.
And if we have any other audience questions for District Two, um, we can bring, if we can bring them forth at this time. Okay. Sorry, I'm having a hard time reading the handwriting, y'all. It appears that large preferred developers get prefer, preferential treatment when it comes to... I'm sorry, I cannot read what this is. You can read it.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, um, I think this is a good question. It appears that large developers get, um, get better treatment when it comes to variances in zoning requests, um, which, you know, city council watch does appear that way. Um, how will you establish policies that support homeowners and small builders, uh, with fairness, and that leads towards more equity?
So the city council doesn't do variance requests. That's the Board of Zoning and Appeals, uh, so I wouldn't be able to speak to that. Uh, in terms of projects that I support personally, because I can't speak to other people's districts, just my own, uh, I work from families who've owned property for years, and now they want to develop it, because they see what's going on in the city, and they want to, uh, create a legacy for their families. Uh, so I, I work with them up to large developers, and I treat everybody the same. I think most people that you talk to in terms of folks who are in development will say that I'm fair. I don't give every people everything that they ask for. The community is very active in development projects in my district. Again, I have a, a community meeting for every rezoning project, and, you know, oftentimes there's pushback from the community, because they want to see certain things, um, in a development, and I am supportive of the community getting those things. So I think that in my district in particular, in particular, I think developers, whether they're, like, again, a family wanting to rezone properties so they can build two-town homes, to, you know, a large, uh, multifamily development, I, I treat them all equally.
Thank you so much. Um, then the next question is, how much time will you dedicate to, um, communicating with your constituents? And then how can, um, individuals... And then, how can individuals be able to schedule phone calls and meetings with you?
So, I have a, again, I have a monthly community meeting except for July and December, the fourth Tuesday of every month at the North Precinct. You don't have to come in person. You can participate via Zoom or Facebook Live. I look at the chat in the Zoom as well as the chat in Facebook Live and answer questions that way. You can call me, 615-669-4390. That is my council phone. You can call or text. Also, you can go to go, G-O dot ONCEHUB, O-N-C-E-H-U-B dot com backslash QuanteTunes, capitalize the K and capitalize the T. That is my scheduling app that I've used the entire four years I've been in office. It pulls up my calendar, and you can schedule a date and time to talk with me. It automatically schedules a Zoom meeting, but if you want to meet in person, I'm always down to do that. Also, I attend other community meetings, all of my neighborhood associations, they invite me to their meetings, and I'm able to attend most of them. I attend events, sometimes with same-day, one-hour notice. I'll show up if my schedule permits. So, anytime you want to talk to me, I make my, I try to make myself available. I'm running unopposed, and I'm here to connect with folks, and still will be doing constituent outreach with the redrawing of the lines in 2021. I know I have some new constituents in District Two, and I'll be reaching out to them as well.
Thank you so much. We got a few more questions. One person said, you said Partners in Care is an alternative to arrest, but they still arrest and assault people. What's your response to that?
I'm not aware of any assault of anyone who has gone out with a mental health professional. What I am aware of is that less than 3% of those encounters have resulted in arrests. If there is a particular incident that you want me to look at, I'd ask that you reach out to me because, again, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. And then, another question is around, there aren't enough programs in Nashville for teens who are at risk, and that there have been a number, you know, teens who have gone to DCS because there weren't any programs. And so, what kind of programs are available for young people who are at risk?
So, the Mayor's Office created an app, and I've shared it on my social media, that has a rundown of all the youth programs that are available in the city. There are a ton of nonprofits that are doing some really good work in the community, but they are on a shoestring budget. And so, they, because they're doing the work, they don't also have the time to market themselves and let more people know, you know, what they're doing in the community. So, I've tried, as councilperson, to uplift those organizations as well as try to fund them through different initiatives. The participatory budgeting citywide program that's out now with the $10 million, that's an opportunity to fund some nonprofits as well as some other grant opportunities. But there are programs out there, and I'm happy to connect folks and continue to push out those organizations.
And we're almost at our time, so this will be our last question.
Okay, sorry. This is two great questions. One is a comment, well, it's a question that you can hopefully answer. Black wealth slash legacy is not attainable if overreach of developments and rezoning continues in the black community? And then, I'll just ask the second one, which is kind of close to it about public infrastructure. What ideas will you share with the new mayor regarding transit?
So, in District Two, the majority of property is still owned by African-Americans. And so, I would be remiss if, to see all this development around the city that has mostly white faces to deny black folks the opportunity to redevelop their land and to profit and to create legacies of wealth for their families. And so, I try to be balanced in how I approach development, and I use the strategy that I mentioned before about concentrating the majority of it along the major corridors. As far as transit, again, District Two, we're one of the highest users of public transit. And so, I have always been an advocate of a we-go, of getting them increased funding, of expanding services, expanding service hours. And so, I will continue to do that when the new mayor comes in.
All right, District Two, Quante Tunes, thank you for your time.
All right, everybody. My name is Theda Murphy. I'm an organizer for the Black Nashville Assembly, and it is my pleasure to present you the candidates running for City Council in District 21. Jamel Campbell Gooch and Brandon Taylor.
I grew up in a church, so if I say something you like, please say amen. Please.
Is Brandon Taylor here? Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, 60 seconds. Give us an introduction and tell us why you're running for City Council.
Hey, everybody. My name is Jamel Campbell Gooch. First time from here. I'm from Clay Street. My family has been here since 1764, 1794. If my history buffs, that's two years before it comes to state. So, if you want to look at structural racism, you can just look at my family lineage. We have been through the mass prison industrial complex. We've experienced everything that you can think about, but we're still here. There's a resiliency in this city, I mean, there's a resiliency in District 21 that's like a sleeping giant. So, I'm also running because I've worked in every sector of this community, public schools, community centers, nonprofits, and there's always something missing. That is the ability to expand and be reinforced through policy. So, that is why I'm running because District 21 needs a fighter.
All right. So, what are your general thoughts on the being a black political agenda?
I love it. I mean, of course, I helped create it. I think it's this thread, we engaged over 10,000 black folks in the past two years, and that's this thread that we know the solutions. As we talk to people, people across this city know what solves issues that they see every single day. They know what solves them. But for some reason, even as we were coming together and having those community forums, what is reflected in our community's mind is not always reflected in our elected leadership. So, as we built that political agenda, it was clear that there was a growing divide between what special interests wanted, what our elected officials were doing, and what the people of Nashville want.
Okay, let's move on to education, which you should be familiar with. The Mayor's current budget does not include an increase for teacher and support staff pay. So, how will you ensure the city uses public tax dollars to fully fund education in Metro Nashville, public schools?
So, one thing that we did, one thing that we've been doing is we've been fighting for a people's budget. So, we've been really taking the budget, breaking it down into very consumable things. If people don't know, our city budget is around about 300 to 400 pages. It's really thick. You need to be an accountant to even be able to understand where your dollars have been going. So, with the Nashville People's Budget Coalition and the Black Nashville Assembly, what I've been directly involved in is being able to take that really dense package of line items and things like that and being able to break it down in everyday community members and talk to everyday community members about it. Also, there's a thread where the people understand that fully funded education is just as important to our public safety. So, if we use those two things, having participatory democracy and participatory budgeting, and organizing the community to actually put pressure on the individuals that are in control of that, we can actually get the fully funded education our community knows it needs and deserves.
Thank you for that. And so, let's talk about housing. District 21 has been the site of extreme displacement brought on by profit-driven development. What are some ways that you will create affordable housing and stop the extreme displacement in District 21?
There's a couple of different things. First, I mean, I'm an educator at heart. So, first, we have to have community forums about what actual solutions there are and what we can do together as a community one. Because I know that with community organization, we can actually solve problems. Two, just like in the political, Black Nashville political agenda, we talk about co-op housing, where we can collectively own land and collectively own spaces where we can all live. Three, we need to start experimenting with innovative things that are happening across the country. Right now, if you didn't know this, in every state except Tennessee, there's guaranteed basic incomes being policed for things like being able to house people that are living on the street. So, we also need to start talking about using innovative solutions that are taking hold across the country so that we know that we have every tool in our belt to solve poverty and to solve homelessness. As our city budget has grown to $3.2 billion, there's actually enough revenue in our city to actually be able to solve these issues. The problem is, is the political will is lacking. And so, we need more political will in the City Council to actually get those innovative things done.
Okay. Well, a follow-up question. Will you, as a City Council member, try to do anything to bring back some of the people who have been displaced?
Absolutely. I think that's one thing we have to talk about. Not only should North Nashville be a place where people that want to live here can stay, but also people that have been foundational to this community have an opportunity to return. Everything that this city is known for comes out of District 21 in North Nashville, from the Hot Chicken to the Jubilee Singers, making it Music City. And so, as housing has become more and more expensive, we have actually been losing the historic foundation of this city. So, we actually need to do is include everybody in the process of making District 21 whole and making people have the ability to come back. Because if District 21 is sound, and if we can solve in District 21, we can also solve it not only in Nashville but across the country.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Let's move on to public safety. So, gun violence and intra-community harm has been an issue in North Nashville for decades, along with targeting policing, leading to 37208 being the highest incarcerated zip code for people born in the 80s. What are some policies and programs that, if elected to Metro Council, you will make happen to create a strong and safer District 21?
So, a couple of things about me. I'm going to date myself, but I was born in that era where it was more likely for folks in this district to go to prison. I was born in the 80s, and because of the loving network and family that District 21 and North Nashville gave me, I was able to survive unlike some of my peers that I grew up with. So, it's a couple of different things I think we can do, and we all know the solutions, right? We can start extending community center hours and making sure that the community centers have the right amount of investment they need. I worked in a community center for years, and the first thing that was always cut was my pay when I worked at a community center. Two, making sure our schools have fully funded equipment, education, and making sure we can have good teacher retention. We want to keep our good teachers. We want to keep teachers, and making sure they get a raise because they are pivotal to public safety. Also, policy things like a guaranteed basic income, credible messenger programs, actual alternatives to police that don't involve police. And that is one thing that we constantly see, even as we do our Black Nashville Assembly work, is that the people understand police alternative to mean non-police. For some reason, our elected officials here see police as an alternative to themselves. And so, that's another communication gap. So, we actually need mental health response that is not associated with police also showing up at your door.
All right, we're going to open it up to questions. I hope people have been putting their questions on the cards, Erica?
And thank you so much to folks who put, who identified which district they wanted these questions to go to. Some of them are directed at Brandon, and I'll put them out there, and maybe Jamel, you can respond, and some of them are directed at you to respond to. So, one is Brandon, there are several black businesses that you have not supported and beer licenses in over two years, but say you are for the black businesses in that district, how will you change your thoughts on allowing these businesses to thrive? And then, for Jamel, if you are elected, how will you help the businesses to move forward with the things that are holding them back by the current councilman?
If I can start with the second one. What I would do is I would bring all the black businesses together, and let's actually talk about what the agenda is for the black businesses in North Nashville. What kind of political power can we build as an economic infrastructure to help serve the people of North Nashville? Oftentimes, if you know, in 1872, there was an interstate built through our community, right? 80% of black businesses that saw North Nashville as a home actually had to close because of the interstate being ran through. So, we've seen what it looks like when City Council and our elected infrastructure actually mobilizes against the economic prosperity of black folks. So, it's actually time for us to actually bring those black folks together economically and start building an economic base that goes along with the political agenda so that we can all rise up.
Beautiful. The next one is, you know, how would you have, if you were on council, how would you have voted on the Titan Stadium?
Thank you for that. So, I definitely would have voted, I would have voted against the Titan Stadium one, and it's several different reasons, but also, I want to talk about the outreach that happened, right? The Titan Stadium deal had actually been going on for about a year before it actually reached our eyes. So, as a City Council person, you get the information early, right? So, what I would have done is I would have brought it back to this community and start having that conversation where we can actually do something about it, not on the third reading, not when it is already done, not when the deals have been made behind closed doors, but immediately. For instance, I think it's time that we start talking about the Major League Baseball Stadium that they've been talking about moving to TSU on the agricultural land. It is actually time now to start talking about and dictating in terms of what we want in our community. It's already too late once it passes committee. It's already too late once it passes the Sports Authority. We have to start talking about those things now, so our options are great and not limited to a small incremental change.
And so, this next one is, there's like quite a bit of anti-Nashville sentiment, and, you know, it's a lot of anti-Miffett sentiment also within the Tennessee General Assembly. And so, what do you think can be done from your role as a City Council person to strengthen that relationship to get things done in dollars in Nashville?
I think a couple of things. First, I want to say, like, District 21 definitely needs a fighter. We're moving into an area where we need to put up a fight, and we need to put up a fight in different ways. I think our city demonstrated what that looks like when they were talking about shrinking City Council. We was actually, the city was actually able to sue the state, get an injunction, and hold that off. I think we need more of that, especially when it comes to state preemption. A lot of times, our elected officials will come to community members and say, we can't do anything because of state preemption, instead of actually just passing the legislation and then putting up a coordinated effort and a coordinated and organizing fight to make sure that we get it done. As organizers, we do that all the time, and that is why we need an organizer and a worker in District 21 and in City Council, because some of this is not just a political fight, it's who has the organizing numbers. We've seen that in North Nashville with the Student Nonviolence Coordinating Committee. We've seen it in North Nashville over and over again throughout the years. And North Nashville, I think, can actually be a base where we can actually fight the state and get those dollars that we need. But I think it's going to be a collective effort where we are organized front and organized unit.
Thank you for that. And so, one question is about, you know, it's for Brandon, when will Public Works pave the whole street, not just the patch up at the area of Clarksville Pike and Rosa L. Parks intersection, and like Eggs Fish, close to where Eggs Fish is? And so, that area has been bumpy and horrible for quite a few years. And then, someone also stated that they listed other roads that have not been paved in over 20 years, and so...
And if I can respond to that, from doors, from Jenkins to Hyman's to 23rd, we hear this over and over again, Old Sage, Scoville, we hear this, right? That we need our roads paved, and we also need speed bumps. We hear that all the time. One thing that people are not asking for is more police. They're asking for infrastructure, right? Because we know that infrastructure can make us safer. So, there's things that also are presented right where there's supposed to be a budget already for us to do those things, right? Other communities don't have to fight for those things, and that's why we need an organized front. We need to work together to get those things done. If I can use one more example, the participatory budgeting process is supposed to be a bonus. We're not supposed to have to enter a participatory budgeting process to get our streets paved. That doesn't make sense. So, things like that, things like that are going to take an organizing effort, but one thing we do need is we need a fighter in the seat. So, while the people are organizing, the fighter can go into behind closed doors and make sure that we're waging that fight on all levels. on our level.
So we have about four more minutes.
Okay, great. So one is, um, there was millions of federal dollars available in 2020 to create a cap over I-40. Uh, what did you think about that idea?
So I was at those community meetings, so I'm not gonna talk about what I think. I want to say what the people thought. The people, the people of North Nashville saw it as another effort to gentrify the area. What they were concerned with, when I went to community meetings, they, if we provided, if we provide an interstate cap, what is that gonna do to our land value? Is, and is that gonna send the taxes up so high that we can't afford to live here? So I think what that was a demonstration is, that was an attempt at a solution that the people did not want that solution, right? They were at the community meeting saying the same thing that we're saying now. What about our streets being paved? What about our schools being fully funded? What about those other things to actually repair the harm that was done to us in 1972 when they drove the interstate through our communities? So that was the response from the community when it came to actually putting that interstate cap over. They also asked for a guaranteed basic income. Like I said before, there are threads of the solution throughout all of us in here. And what we need is, we need a collection and a body that's willing to take that information and literally represent, fight for folks, but also bring that information back to our community.
Have time for two more questions, or two more? Okay. Um, so one, what, um, alternative public safety, what alternatives to public safety will be implemented to protect schools from gun violence?
So we could do, we could do several things. So I, I also want to say, gun violence is, is an issue across the country. It's not just in our schools, it's also on our streets, it's also in our communities, and we have to work together to actually provide solutions to gun violence. Things like credible messenger programs, things like alternatives to in-school suspension, things like actually having the programming to keep our young people busy are very important. Also, unfortunately, we have to start training each other on things like stop the bleed. We need to make sure that we are all equipped to be able to handle these issues in certain ways. But what I will tell you from our youth assembly members, when they go into Maplewood and they see those dogs, that don't make them feel safer. When the police are showing up with metal detectors, that does not make our, that does not make our young people feel safer. So also, we need an ability to bring our young people in to actually have them talk about what will make them feel safer in school and actually be able to use that to make them feel safer. Because what we want to do isn't making them feel safe, any safer.
All right, we got time for one more question. I just want to shout out Trey and Vibe for grabbing, grabbing the questions from the audience for us.
Yes. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all so much for these really great questions. Um, we have one more question, so, um, uh, one is talks about, uh, the Boys and Girls Club off of Cleveland being closed for the summer and not being able to have the after-school programs, and so recognizing that may also be because, uh, issue with parks, community center needing their space back. Um, but curious about how can we prevent other programs that serve young people, um, from closing, and what can Metro do, especially around making sure young people have access to after-school programs and summer programs?
I will say this, as a person who worked in a community center, I worked at Edge Hill, uh, Rose Park under Ms. Marlowe. Uh, yeah, I know some, every time I say that, somebody in the building knows Ms. Marlowe. Uh, but one thing that always happened around budget season, if there was ever a cut, they literally cut the community center hours. We would have meetings being like, "It's budget time, expect for your hours to be cut." That's the first thing we have to stop doing, because when the community centers close at 6:30 instead of 9 o'clock, then our young people have nowhere to go. We would feed young people, they would get access to the internet, they would get programming like cooking classes, and so we need to actually fund those more so that we have after-school programs, so that we have our community centers be well-equipped, so they can actually take on more young people and keep more young people busy throughout the summer, because that is what makes our community safe.
Yes. So you have 60 seconds for a closing statement.
Thank you for that. Um, if you can do me a favor, if you can do me a favor, if you can look at your neighbor and say, "It's time." I don't know if that neighbor was feeling that, 'cause you look at the other neighbor and say, "Right now." So even as our city balloons to 3.2 billion dollars, it is time, it is time for us to have fully-funded education, it is time for us to have programming that involves our young people, it is time to have diversified, uh, public safety, it's time to have more than just a Barnes Fund for affordable housing. Our city has the dollars, but in order to get access to those money, we need a fighter, a worker, and an organizer. And with my experience, I think I can be that fighter and that worker and that organizer for District 21. So if you elect me, if you elect Jamelle Campbell-Gooch for District 21, I promise to bring the decades of organizing work to our community and actually get the wins that our community needs to see themselves in the future.
All right, thank y'all, everybody. Good questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, so if the candidates running in District 1 can join us up here and you can start making your way to the stage, um, thank you so much, Leeta and Jamelle. And so now we'll have Shauna, another Black Nashville Assembly member, join us to lead us through the District 1, uh, portion of our candidate forum. And please, you know, um, Trey and Brandon are passing out, um, note cards. If you have questions, please give them to them, and we'll make sure we answer them. And so we are synthesizing them to make sure that we can use our time well. Um, so if there are questions that have already been answered or questions that are similar, we're gonna put them together so we can make sure we get those questions answered. But thank y'all so much for participating in this. This is really powerful. Thank you so much. We're gonna start soon. If you want to take your seat, uh, we'll get started with, uh, our last panel for the day. I also want to name, if you don't already know, the, thank you to Jefferson Street Baptist Church, Missionary Baptist Church, again, for hosting us. They also have this going live on their YouTube and Facebook, so for folks who couldn't make it, or are at home, or want to watch it later, you can go there and re-watch it, um, and see what questions were asked, and also see how candidates answered them. So please, again, share that feed with your family, with your friends all across North Nashville, so people can make informed decisions, um, and we'll feel, and, and we'll feel well-equipped, uh, to answer those questions and decide who they want to vote for when they go to the ballot box. Again, uh, it's on YouTube and Facebook, at Jefferson Street Missionary Baptist Church, or J Street on Facebook. Thank y'all. Again, I'm gonna pass it to Shauna.
Hello, hello, beautiful people. It's great to see you all. My name is Shauna Greer. I use she/her pronouns, and I am so excited to facilitate the candidates for District 1. So candidates, I'm just gonna give you some rules of engagement for the next 40 minutes. Then I'm gonna go over a brief agenda for our time together, and then I'm gonna release it to you. So first, I just want to remind everyone that there is a lovely timekeeper here in yellow. She is coincidentally holding a yellow card. That is the card that she'll hold up at your 30-second mark. Each of you will get 90 seconds to respond to my questions. Um, so she'll hold up the, the yellow at 30, and then when you see the red card, that is her polite way of saying, "Please stop." Um, and if you continue, I will stop you with a smile. Um, also, everyone's gonna get 60 seconds to introduce yourself, to say why you're running for city council. Then I'm gonna ask you a question that is specific to District 1. I'll then ask you about the BNA political agenda, and then I'm gonna ask you three questions. One about education, one about housing, and one about public safety. And if we have any time after that, since we have the largest panel, then we're gonna open it to questions that are submitted. Any questions about how that's gonna go? You will have the opportunity for a rebuttal. If someone says something, you're like, "Ooh, I'm not feeling that." You have 30 seconds for that, right? But 90 seconds are all the questions that I ask you. Any questions? Good, great. So friends, please tell me in 60 seconds or less, why are you running for city council? Also, maybe say your name.
My name is Joy Kimbrough. I'm an attorney here in Nashville. I am running for District 1 because District 1 is me. I have, I was born in District 1. I went to every zone public school in District 1. Um, my children were born and raised in District 1, and my grandchildren were born in District 1. I have love for District 1. I'm at a point in my life now where I have stopped taking new cases, so I actually have the time now, uh, to take this on. I'm not, I'm kinda semi-retired, but I have the time to do this, and I want to do this for my district. I, a lot of people have seen me fight in the courtroom on behalf of people, causes and issues, and I promise to take that same fight to the council.
Hello, my name is Tim Thompson. I'm running for councilman in District 1. Uh, my reasoning for running for district councilman, and, um, councilman in District 1 is the simple fact that I've been a business owner in District 1 for about 12 years now, going on about 13. Uh, I was educated in barber college. I'm a master barber. I was educated there by Mr. Chin Wanyi, class, I mean, World Class University was the college that I went to. Um, I also have started, um, some community education and things like that in District 1, where it'd be with golf, with the golfing program, with golf with, uh, with Ms., uh, Ms. Gregory and her program, when, where she does golf down at, um, Ted Rose now. Um, and then I've also done, uh, a multiplicity of things and working with Haynes Park Neighborhood Association. So I would like to continue that work, not just in my neighborhood, but also throughout the district.
Hello. Hey, my name is Ruby Baker, and I am running for Metro Council District 1. I have, have lived in, uh, Bordeaux Hills for 23 years, and I have successfully raised four adult children that taught me how to deal with diversity and being committed even during tough times. I currently serve as the president of Bordeaux Hills Residential Association faithfully for the past 15 years. I've been on the ground, I've been there during the May 2010 flood, also during the tornado that hit our area, and I'm very focused on the people preservation and progress in District 1. I hear the voices that have gone unheard, and my agenda is to focus on the people and bring them back into the council chamber where we belong.
Hi, I'm Robert Harris. Um, I'm a Nashville native, born right here in Metro General Hospital, graduated from Metro Public Schools, went to Hunter's Lane with a gentleman that you may know, Vincent Dixie, our state representative. Um, I've worked so hard, uh, for the city. I've been a 14-year Metro Nashville employee. Um, I have started out as an intern in the Assessor of Properties office, worked my way all the way to the mayor's office, where I served as a city council liaison. After seeing that we've had not one, not two, not three, not four, but five, uh, council people in the last seven years, I knew that it was time to stem the tide, and it needed the experience that I'm bringing to the table. Um, I ran the 2020 census, and I'm ready to work for you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean Daly, and I'm running for council in District 1, and I stand for each and every person in this room that has ever felt left out, passed over, or put upon by our local government. For the last 15 years, I've dedicated myself solely to learning the art of leadership and to bring those skills back to my community so that we can have the change that we deserve, not tomorrow, now. And so, I'm an Army veteran, I hold a master's degree in civic leadership, and I'm ready to get to work. I'm ready to work for you. But I can't do it alone, and the last thing that we need in council is another rubber stamp. We have plenty enough of that already. We need somebody that has the courage to say no and the wisdom to say yes when it counts. Remember to vote daily on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you all for that brief introduction into why you were running for city council. I'm gonna flip my questions a little bit. The first question that I'll ask you, um, will be about your general thoughts about BNA's political agenda. I know that it was emailed out to all of you, but in case you forgot, it includes things like removing SROs from schools, removing trap, removing cops from traffic stops, and also some things about guaranteed basic income. So generally, what are your thoughts about that political agenda?
I'd like to say, oh, we started, I didn't receive, yeah, sorry. No, I think she was first. Go ahead, Joy.
In general, um, I support BNA. Um, its founder, members I've worked with before on the ground floor, when they were doing and instituting many, um, programs around the city. Um, I support them, I put my money behind them, so I really believe in what they do. The members, the different members of the organizations have been there, like when there have been police shootings, they've supported me, they've come to court and testified on behalf of my clients. Um, I wholeheartedly support them, their agenda, and I'm sorry I didn't speak specifically, I got a little thrown off when we were going back and forth here, but I do support them.
Okay, um, I've been working in the community for 15 years, and I've been on the ground in Bordeaux, in the Bordeaux area, in District 1. So one thing, the gentleman that was up here earlier, that was part of the organization, right? The part that really resonate with me is the power piece, because in our community, in our district, we've been disconnected. So I think when we come back together and create a vision for what we want to see happen, that power piece is what's gonna move us forward. So he said a lot, and they have a lot, but that's the piece that really resonate with me. So if there's any legislation or anything I need to do to support that, I will, but it's the power, giving the power back to the people where it belongs.
So now is the time for us to rise up, and any mechanism that we can use to bring power back to the people, we ought to do that. And I will admit, I know a lot less than I should about BNA, but the platform and what you stand for is what I stand for. I stand for bringing power back to the people and giving them every chance that they need to be successful. And from what I can tell, you all are heavily engaged in that, and so I'm raising my hand and saying, "I want to be a part of this," and I'm a latecomer, but I like what I see.
I go home, and I'll leave here tonight, and I'll go home to a metro school teacher. Um, I've seen some of the problems that exist in our metro schools with food insufficiency. Um, I've seen some of the summertime, as we approach the summer, we're gonna start to see that be a major problem. So it's hard to focus on education, it's hard to focus on doing the right thing when you're not able to eat, when your stomach is, is growling. So that's one thing. So I support this organization, and I also support organizations like the Nashville Freedom School Partner that supports a minority literacy, and I am a huge proponent of making sure that we have all the tools in the toolbox that make it possible for us to attain, attain success as individuals in, in, in this community.
I support Black Nashville Assembly wholeheartedly, and the reason being is, is I believe in organizing. I believe that the more that we can come together as a people, young, old, black, and, um, retired, we need to all come together to speak to the life of our community, to speak to the life of what we built in our community. District 1 has been built based off the backs of successful black entrepreneurs and school teachers and lea- and leaders in our community who's made District One what it is to this day. One day, uh, uh, I was having a discussion with one of our seniors, seniors in the community, and he mentioned that this used to be Black Bell Me. Now, what does that represent, Black Bell Me? It represents the wealth, the heritage of old money and things like that in the Nashville community. Has that changed? No, it's not. Those people are, are still there. They just need the leadership, and they need the recognition in order for them to rise again.
Beautifully said. Thank you.
I would just like to say this, um, and no one in particular, but I take this seriously. I take what I do seriously. I take what BNA says seriously and what they stand for. I've been on the ground floor of almost every civil rights issue that's hit Nashville. Let's talk about demonstrated records. I haven't seen these people for justice, uh, justice for Jaquese. I hadn't seen them when Daniel, uh, Hamrick was gunned down. I haven't seen them when, um, the lady in Goodlessville was shot. I haven't seen them. I haven't seen them on a lot of issues. And it's, and I don't wanna attack or anything like that, but let's talk about demonstrated records. Not let's get here and say we love BNA. When have they been to a meeting?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so now we're, I appreciate that. So now we're going to move into our Bordeaux-specific questions. The first Bordeaux-specific question is, do you support the landfill in District One? Yes or no? And Mr. Daly, we'll start with you.
I was gonna start anyway on that one. That has, uh, it, it's really important for me because it's one of the big reasons why I'm in this race. I live very close to this dump. I see it every day. I smell it every day. And when it was floated that we're gonna get another, yet another dump, I mean, the imagery can't be more clear about environmental injustice and how time and time again, we get dumped on in our community, and I'm sick of it. And we already have many active dumps. We have two active dumps, several other inactive dumps that need to be regularly monitored for environmental impact. And I don't know about y'all, I don't necessarily trust people to monitor these things effectively when it comes to our kids and getting poisoned by some of these dumps. And so, one of the big reasons why I'm sitting right here today is, as long as I have a voice in me, there shall be no more dumps in District One.
Of course I don't. I have family members in District One. The lady who married us, uh, is out here. She lives in District One. My, my good friend Vincent is in District One. We all live, and we know what, what that landfill does, not only to our health, but it also does to our values of our property. We talked about, uh, generational wealth, and the majority of the generational wealth, especially particularly in black families, comes from their housing. So, you know, you can't put prisons in our community. You can't put a landfill on our community and expect for our values to increase. So absolutely, I live in this community. My family lives here. My friends live here. And, and I adamantly support keeping that dump closed and closing it.
Well, it is an astounding, "No, I do not support landfills." We live next to the Bordeaux landfill that was there. We, uh, we have residents forty years long that smelled the stench. And because of the Jackson Law that was passed by one of our council members, there will be no more new landfills in District One, especially not under my watch. We have one that we are working to close. And I fully support equa, air, fresh air for us to breathe, but we have work to do to close the one that we currently have. So I wasn't there when the Bordeaux landfill was there, but I feel the concern of the residents there. I know family members that lost children as a result of the bad air quality. So no, I do not support any landfill starting in our district, not under my watch.
I don't support the dump. I don't support it at all. I, I, much like the other people who have said here on the candidacy, the dump is a bad thing for our community because of what it does. The, the smell is horrendous, um, and what it does to the underground table with the water and things like that, and how it affects us being close to the Cumberland River. It affects all of us. We all, at some point in time, use the Cumberland River for some type of water resource. Um, however, though, I, I do think that it's important for us to have conversations, to hold those, those companies responsible for what they have done in our communities. And they shouldn't just close down and get off sky free. So they have a portion of responsibility that they owe back to District One to help repair some of the damages in which they've done.
No, I absolutely do not support it. I live the closest to the landfill. I despise the landfill. I always have. Um, you know, my entire family has had to live around it. So absolutely not. And I think there will be other, uh, problems we see on down the line as a result of that landfill and some of the problems with chemicals and other things, um, that, that landfill is responsible, responsible for releasing. So I absolutely do not support that landfill.
Can we make a thirty-second comment? Okay, and I also would like to add that I spoke up and was able to defeat two landfill developments that tried to happen in our area recently. And even though that landfill will close, the commercial landfill will close, we still will have work to do. Because when they leave, they're not taking the mound with them. So we will still have work to do. So not just close it, but we got work to do. And I am all in to help with whatever we need to do.
It does sound like then that there's, uh, cons, a consensus on, for District One's candidacy about ecological injustice. All right, so we're going to move into the three questions that I mentioned around education, housing, and public safety. So starting with public safety, Mr. Harris, we're gonna start with you. The question is, what are some policies that you would support or sponsor that will ensure traditionally public schools like White's Creek remain open and have resources that students need to feel cared for and well-equipped to graduate?
Well, we have so many companies moving to Nashville. And, you know, they get tax incentives, you know, if, and I say that if you're going to benefit from Nashville's resources, that you have to give back to Nashville. So one of the things that I would do to support White's Creek, who has gone from a powerhouse when I was in school, seventeen hundred students, to six hu, to, I think, around six hundred students right now, is to focus on vocational learning. Two, to have a foundation which these, uh, companies have, uh, who have benefited from Nashville contribute to that also supports those schools, you know, financially. Cause if you have been to any PTO meetings, you understand that the PTO gives resources. So we don't have the Bell Me resources. So these companies need to, to set up a new, um, funding method for the schools in our communities.
I think one of the big issues that we face, um, firsthand knowledge of this, is students feel like they don't have direction, and that leads to all kinds of, uh, problems. And it, it can lead to the worst of things. And so, one of the things that I experienced in high school was I worked really hard in an economics class, and I was picked to shadow the mayor, and it changed my life. It changed my outlook on politics. It gave me the information that I needed to direct how I spent the rest of my, uh, youth and education. And so, I strongly would like to do and to foster an environment where people know what they're getting into before they go to college. They shadow. They find out what they enjoy, what they like doing.
I would work very closely with our school board, um, district councilperson, Sharon Gentry, and also with Dr. Adrian Battle. White's Creek High School has a very good dual education program that I don't think a lot of people know about. And so, we need more programs like that. That will give our students a two-year edu, college education at the same time that they are receiving a high school education. I'm learning about some of the, uh, efforts that have been put towards educating our student and giving them a head, heads up on skills they need when they leave high school. There's a very good solar energy program that most people probably didn't know about that our seniors made all the way to the White House, presenting what they did on the solar farm at White's Creek High School. So I fully support anything coming out of, out of our district that's gonna make our children more educated and ready for this job market. But White's Creek High School, fully supporting White's Creek High School and the education of not just our high school students, but also our elementary stu, elementary children. It starts there. So I will be looking at any program that's gonna help support our ed, our elementary style, uh, excuse me, our elementary school students along with our high school students.
What I see with, uh, helping and, uh, assisting with White's Creek, I think one of the main things, if you analyze our district, if you just look at the panel here, I don't think any of us has a high school kid that's at White's Creek right now. I think, uh, Mr. Harris is the only one who has a child that's close to being, uh, remotely, uh, a high school student, if I understand that to be correct. But the reason why I'm bringing it up is, is that what District One lacks in terms of the schools and that we have is that we have no fam, new families that are moving into our neighborhoods. We need to regenerate our neighborhood with black families, with black families with mothers and fathers and children that are moving in, that can go to these high schools that are in our area, that can populate the elementary schools in our areas. Because the average age of our communities is sixty-plus. If we don't get any younger families in our community, then how do we expect for our community to grow? Because what's happening is that the kids of, of, of our people, who we are second generation of, they've already moved out. And they haven't moved back in. They populated these other schools. So we've gotta get more families back into the community to help populate the schools that are there.
As I said earlier, I attended every public school in District One that I was on to, and I, I naturally have a love for these schools. And of course, I'm gonna do any and everything I can uh, for these schools, uh, even out on a personal level. We, we have this problem in District One, and I'd say we, cause I include myself regarding holding people accountable. And I believe that what council people can do is approve a budget. And of course, nobody, I don't think anybody would say, "No, take money from education. Let's not give it to her." We have a, a, um, school board member. Let's hold people accountable. Let's hold them accountable. Let's start doing that. Um, but yes, as far as the budget, yes, I'm gonna approve anything. But a lot of, a lot more deeper problems, uh, let's hold people accountable.
I have a thirty-second response. I have four children that successfully graduated from White's Creek High School and are doing very well. So I'm very familiar with some of the programs at White's Creek High School, especially the ROTC, which send my sons, my sons graduated from there. And I have, like I said, I have four children that started at Bordeaux Elementary School. So I've been in the district long enough to see the changes.
So I also wanna address one thing that is part of the success of White's Creek High School, and that is the feeder schools. We need to address where the feeder schools are being closed. We have, um, you know, Jolton Middle, and also, we have the Old King's Lane, which is Robert E. Lillard, the only thing in District One that is named after a black person. So we really need to address the feeder schools as an issue.
Thank you. And just a reminder for the rebuttals, there are only thirty seconds. So, no, you're, I just want you to know before I cut you off that I'm not being rude. All right, so the next question is housing. We're gonna start with Mr. Thompson, and then, Miss Joy, if you'll go next. So, the housing question. Our members and other community members are being displaced and/or can barely afford to live in North Nashville. What are some policies that you will implement that will ensure access to affordable and dignified housing?
Ooh, that's a tough question. Um, well, that's understandable. So, uh, one of the things with housing that we have with, uh, the community growing like it is, uh, affordable housing is definitely a task because we do have to have more affordable housing for families to be able to come into our community. Uh, some of the developments as we see now, you see multifamily units that are going up along Ashton City Highway, and one new one now that's going on Clarksville Highway. Uh, but we gotta do more development in order to increase the density of the people in that area. And one way that we do that is that we have to increase, like, um, some investors to come to that community and grow housing that's affordable and obtainable for families to be able to, um, participate in that community and grow. It would also grow the school system as well. Um, what policies I will put in place to help assist with that? Um, right now, at this moment, I don't know. And the reason why I don't know is because we, it's yet to be determined in terms of the data and the future of what's gonna happen in our community. Um, it's something that we definitely have to take a look at.
I think we should start by using some of the land, public land, or land that belongs to the city, bu, belongs to the government, and develop on it. Any dilapidated building, let's look there and see what we can do with it, and have some really strong and strict guidelines for any builder that comes in to build, or, you know, they're coming in under the guise of helping the people. Really have strict, we have a lot of things on the book that we just don't enforce. You know, we just kinda lackluster when it comes to that. But I'd say use the public land. Use land for people. And then let's, let's just do some things personally to help people out. I know, and I, if we were at another, uh, panel like this, I did this, not in anticipating a run-in for council, but I've always just tried to take some of the properties I have and make them affordable, on White Bridge Road, on Drake's Branch Road, uh, downtown, in East Nashville. I've always not sought to get what I can get just to get it. But you have to really care about people, to do for people. Um, so I really do think we should use some of the public land we have. And then ourselves, let's see what we can do to help people out.
Okay, what I've, what I've done as president of our Neighborhood Association is work with our neighborhood groups and also the other residents in District One. And we were very successful in bringing a fifteen-million-dollar workforce housing development to our district. So we have to start where we can start. And we brought a fifteen-million-dollar workforce housing, uh, unit to our district. And at the same time, while we were preparing for that, I was making sure the seniors were signed up on the tax-free program so that they would not be pushed out. And we had to minimize gentrification. So we had to make sure that our seniors were taken care of at the same time while we were bringing in this workforce housing. And so also, what I would do is to continue to increase the tax-free program so that more can be eligible for the program as we actively pursue more development, equitable and sustainable development for our district that we so deserve, and we will get it.
My good friend, Bill Barnes, um, who I was very close to with before he passed away, um, is the namesake of the Barnes Fund. Um, that Barnes Fund is a small portion of the metro budget. There are two things, there are two low municipalities in the state of Tennessee that are not allowed to have impact fees. One of them is Shelby County. I bet you can guess what the next one is. What do they have in common? Um, those impact fees are fees that come directly from developers to contribute to our community. So infrastructure, schools, um, the policing, you know, issues that we might be able to do, alternative policing. All these things can be impacted by charging the people who are benefiting from our community. It, the, it already exists, people. It already exists. But Nashville and Shelby County are not able to take advantage of it. We're being attacked by the state, and we need to. We're being attacked by the state, and we need to fight back. That's it.
Greed is a very powerful drug. And we've all seen the effects of rampant greed in our city. We've seen the profit motive decimate whole neighborhoods with these tall, skinny, half-million-dollar homes going up everywhere that are totally inaccessible to everybody that I know and hang out with, and myself included. And so, if we in District 1 let what's happened to these other neighborhoods with this rampant corruption, gentrification, this development that's so insidious and leaves out everybody that has been in this neighborhood and needs help, if we don't do something about it now, we're going to lose it all. And so, the stakes couldn't be higher. We have a chance to make sure that you put somebody in council that can say no to these developers who want to do what they want to do. Well, sorry, you can't do what you want to do because our people come first. And we've got to do something about this problem. I'm sick of kicking the can down the road in Nashville. Let's solve this affordable housing crisis. And there's plenty of opportunity out there to say yes, but we have to learn how to say no.
All right, so last of the prepared questions before we give you all 60 seconds to do your sort of closing arguments and why we should vote for you. The last one is public safety, and we'll start with you, Joy. Every time black people ask for policies and funding that foster safety and investments in our community, too many elected officials take that to mean more police. What are some policies and programs that you would support that will foster safety in black and working-class communities that really get to the root of the intra-community harm and police violence?
I would support, and I do support organizations like Gideon's Army. I think they gave us an excellent model with their violence interruption and those sort of things, the different programs they have for people returning home to try to keep mass incarceration down. I think they did an excellent job. They got some bad press, but they did, I'm here to attest, they did an excellent job. Programs like that, where you have people who know community members, and you're putting people who know community members with their community, and seeking to decrease crime, that are helping one another, that have this affinity and love for one another. I think we need programs like that. And I can't tell you everything they've done, but I just, and this 60 seconds is not enough. I see you with the yellow. Okay, all right, okay, oh, all right. So, I'm just saying, programs like that and what they've done. And like I said before, they come, they follow people all the way. They don't leave you. They continue to try to nurture and help you. And for, I know the news gave them a bad spin, but they have a lot of success stories, a lot of success stories. And I think programs like that would serve as an excellent model for alternatives to police.
Just a reminder, for these questions, you do have 90 seconds. And the yellow is just a, hey, 30 seconds have passed. The red is like, you need to wrap up in five seconds or I'll cut you off.
So, I'll just finish up an emergent leadership class where we focus in on getting more community people involved where, in, whereas in our neighborhood associations can do some more individual protection of their own communities by being able to be eyes on the ground, ears on the ground, so they can look out more for their individual streets and communities in which they live on versus waiting for the police or someone like that to come in and do that for them. We have to unite our communities back together. It was a pleasure to meet, to see, like, on Facebook and social media. You know, there was a question that was raised up in the barbershop today was like, what's the red light? What's going to inform all of the neighbors that there's something actively going on in our community? Why do we have to wait to hear the helicopter in the air to figure out that there's something that's went wrong? Are we looking on the news the next morning to find out exactly what happened? So, I think one of the perspectives in terms of the spread that the news and get the word out faster is by incorporating and get more neighborhood people involved. And it would help us assist by going street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood, and finding those leaders who can, we can empower to take control of the neighborhoods.
I would fully, I fully support the program that Council Lady Toomes was talking about as it relates to alternative policing. So, I would fully support that. I'm just learning what that is. But right now, speaking of what she said, from what she said, I would support that as an alternative to arresting people. But as far as the Neighborhood Watch and the community feeling safe. In 2008, I started our Neighborhood Watch because I was getting afraid in my neighborhood. I was feeling safe and secure when I moved there, but then things started to change. And I was even afraid to go to my mailbox, and my neighbors were as well. So, we started our Neighborhood Watch and worked closely with our police department and rebuilt our trust in the police department. And to this day, they still use our Neighborhood Watch as an example of how a community can come back together and take control of the safety in their neighborhood. So, as a council representative, as a council leader, I will support neighborhoods wanting to connect together and rebuild the relationship with the police. But first, as a council representative, I'm going to make sure the police department is fully funded so we can have the police in the staff that we need that can just patrol our neighborhoods with the blue lights going without racing to an incident. That made the neighbors feel safe, and that's what I would do.
So, alternatives, first, we need to start with education. Let's start there because, you know, there's a reason why they're attacking these third graders right now, and that's because of literacy rates. We need to support all types of literacy programming. Secondly, we need to have more diversity in the police force. I mean, that's a huge problem. I know that people are less likely to attack people that look like them. So, diversity in many different ways. Third, I'd like to say that reinstituting the Police Athletic League, that allows the young people to know the officers because athletics was a huge part of my growing up, you know, whether it was baseball or football. And these are the ways that you get to know the youth in your community. We need to also institute programs that have them living in our community so they know the people because you're less likely to hurt somebody that you know. And that's it. You have to be a part of the community to protect the community.
A few things with that. So, we've got to have police officers from the communities that they're policing. They'll be invested in that community if they grew up there or have property there, if they have a stake in that neighborhood. You bring in all these cops from all around the county, outside of the county, they don't care, or they don't care as much as they should. And so, that's thing number one. Thing number two for me is we need somebody in a position of leadership and power to stand up to the police union and hold these police, these bad actors, not all of them are bad, but these bad actors accountable. And I see other council people and other local government officials quaking in their boots because of the union for these police officers. But unless we stand up and make sure that these people who do bad things are held accountable, they're just going to keep doing it. And we can't afford one more death, not one more. Let's put a stop to it. And for goodness sakes, let's get our oversight board back by any means necessary.
All right, so in our last five minutes, I'm going to give each of you 60 seconds to just tell us, like, make the pitch for yourself. Why should we vote for you for District 1?
Again, I'm Joy Kimwell, and I'm respectfully asking for your vote. And I just don't say this just to say it. A vote for me is a real investment. It's a real investment in your future. I'm not speaking you today hypothetically, theoretically. I'm talking to you today about proven record, a proven record. I tell people all the time, a person is who they are. The person is of itself. You, whoever they are, that's who they are. And they don't change. Sometimes it's amplified who they are, magnified, multiplied, but a person is who they are. And I ask you today, check my record, check my record. I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to be dishonest, and I'm going to fight. I'm going to fight for District 1.
My name is Tim Thompson, and I'm running for District Number 1 Councilman. And the reason why I asked you to vote for me is because I am a resident and I'm a business owner at District 1. And I'm asking you to vote for me because we need leadership, and we need leadership bad. We've, I mean, my thing is, is that I'm stepping up to this plate. As nervous as I am and as fearful as I am, out of respect of the position that I have because we don't need another mess-up. We don't need another functioning, somebody that just wants to fill the position of being councilman in the area. What we need is track worker, we need function, we need active, we need to engage the people in the community. And I'm a person who's done that, I've been doing it, and I would love to continue to do that for our district. A vote for me is for District 1, thank you.
I am running for Metro Council, District 1. I have served in this capacity as public servant for more than 15 years. I just recently retired after 43 years of service with 18 years on the last job I had. I am dedicated, committed, especially to my responsibilities. And my focus will be on the people, preservation and progress for every neighborhood and community in District 1. District 1, I hear you, I hear you. I will be focused on you. I've had 15 years of community service, and that would be 250 community meetings that I've had to date as a neighborhood leader. $24 million in investments to District 1 as a neighborhood leader. Imagine what we could do if we partnered together with me as your council representative. My name is Ruby Baker, Metro Council, District 1.
I'm Rob Harris, and I'm running for District 1. I have been a leader in this community in so many different ways. I ran the 2020 Census for the city. I was over the East Park Disaster Response. I've started an organization which gives back to the city called the Nashville North Collaborative. Now, that's me, Quante Toomes, Senator Gilmore, Vincent Dixie, Harold Love. And we've come and we bought voting rights seminars, we bought expungement clinics. We've done real things in this community, things that have helped, things that have made this community great. And I will continue to do that. I'm running on four things: transparency, accountability, accessibility, and communication. I've already started that. So, I have a podcast and I also have a newsletter coming this month. Look for me at robharrisfornashville.com.
Can I just say, it's been an absolute pleasure to be in front of all of you and to discuss my views and my future vision for District 1. The stakes cannot be higher, you all. This is our city. And if we don't do something quick, if we don't have somebody that's not asleep at the wheel but can take the reins and do what's necessary for the people who live here, we may lose it all. And so, my thing about this as a resident, not just as a candidate, but as a resident, I don't want somebody in there that goes along to get along. I want somebody that's got fire in their belly, somebody that wants it, somebody that doesn't care what the establishment thinks of them, who's separate from that. I want somebody who represents the little one, the one who doesn't have a voice. And so, for me, the choice would be clear. I'm a little biased. My name is Sean Daly, I'm running for council in District 1. shawndalyforcouncil.com.
Thank you all for participating in that panel. I really appreciate your candidness in this. So, we have time for just two questions. So, I'm going to turn it over to Erica to read off the two questions from the audience.
Awesome, and actually three. One is a really quick question, I'll say yes or no. Have you or your neighborhood association received any funding from waste management? We had a few waste management questions, and so, we can just go one by one. You can say yes or no, we'll start with you.
No.
No.
My neighborhood has received more than $45,000 to help restore during the May 2010 flood from waste management, the lead company, Home Depot, and other agencies. So, my neighborhood has received help during the May 2010 flood.
No. No.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure we asked that question because we've received it a few times. The next question is about, there are quite a few questions around, like redevelopment and economic development. If elected, what would you do in your capacity as a councilperson to revitalize economic development in District 1? Economic development, sorry.
One thing that I would do, any good manager makes an assessment of your assets. And we have a great many of them in District 1. And one thing that we don't have, especially along Clarksville Pike, is basically a food desert. We have a lot of unused retail space that could be so much more than it is. It's sad, and frankly, it makes me really sad driving past it every day. And so, there's a tremendous opportunity there to support local businesses, but give them the support that they need to be successful. Don't just throw them off into the deep end. And so, if elected to council, I would make sure that that happens with a focus on minority-owned businesses and woman-owned businesses to make the culture of that area really special, vibrant, and a place that people come from other neighborhoods to go to.
First of all, I think that we have so many different neighborhoods in our community. And some of them want development, and some of them don't. So, in Bordeaux, we want services. So, as we were talking earlier, I've served for four years on Quante Toomes Advisory Board. I would, you know, fill up those main corridors. That's Clarksville Pike, Weis Creek Pike, and Ashland City Highway, that area that surrounds Bordeaux. So, you know, I would like to put in where the Bordeaux Hospital exists, a hospital, a hospital center that focuses on healthcare and it also focuses on innovation. So, bringing that type of resources to our community, I think that would be great. And we also want to continue to support the businesses that currently exist.
For the last several months, I've toured District 1, and I've identified 27 different neighborhoods and seven different communities. We have the space within District 1 to do positive, sustainable economic development. And I will work with each one of those neighborhoods to create a vision of what they want to see happen in the district rather than throwing out a blanket, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Mainly, we will focus on the corridors, which has the better infrastructure. But we have an infrastructure issue in our district that must be addressed before we keep thrusting development here and there, here and there. We have the space, and we will work and develop smart growth in those spaces.
My opinion about the economic development in the area has to come from many of the families that we have in that area. We have to be very specific in terms of how we do economic development based on the affordability basis of the community. Yes, yes, there's a lot of more value in our community because of the age and the retirees that are there. But a majority of the people in our district, for the most part, they don't have fixed income. So, we want development, we want these new places and things like that. But we also have to make sure that we have affordability and we have the proper people in our communities that can continue the sustainability of those businesses that we bring. So, local businesses would be, and smaller businesses would be an intricate piece in terms of helping to develop those to bring more programs and things that we can develop better businesses for our community from people in the community.
I agree with parts of what a couple of people have said. We have a very diverse community. Our community includes the Bordeaux area, Scottsboro, Jolton, Weis Creek area. And in this diversity, you have diverse needs and wants. Some areas don't want any development whatsoever. Stop, don't come here. You know, you have to respect that. So, before I give, I don't think it's even proper to just give an answer to that.
to just give an answer to that without consulting and speaking with the community, and each, each part of the community. I'd have to take what they say into consideration because if I am elected, I represent them, I will zealously represent them. But I do represent them, and I would have to consider their concerns.
And then, we also got quite a few questions around infrastructure. And so, one is, what would you do in your role as a city councilperson to support the development of public infrastructure in District One? And then, the other piece is, what ideas do you have around, like, public transportation and transit in District One? And how would you create policies that would maybe increase transit?
I thought by now, we would have hoverboards. We don't have these dang hoverboards. We got so, we have so much potential with the data analytics and with a lot of the AI technology are out there, that's out there now. We can crunch the numbers, figure out where the people are who need the transportation the most, and give it to them. We're not doing that. We're not digging down, we're not using what's available. And that would be the first thing, is to make our transit system as high-tech as possible so that we can maximize the resources that we already have, focus on those neighborhoods that need to get from point A to point B, and don't waste it on those that don't. I think it's just a simple equation about where the needs are and how you can meet those, and use smaller transit systems for places like Bellevue and elsewhere that may have onesies, twosies, but when you need it, you gotta have it, and let's give it to them.
First, the infrastructure issue. So, we look at Jolton, and we see that there are more black-cap fire hydrants than anyplace else in the city. That needs to be addressed. Three-point-six million dollars will buy a pumping station, and they also have two-inch water lines instead of the six-inch water lines that are needed. So, what that means, that is public safety right there. What that means is if we have a fire at Jolton Elementary, then we don't have protection from that. Additionally, when we talk about the mass transit system, we need to start looking at new things. We need to start talking, we talked about basic, guaranteed basic income. Well, wouldn't it be nice if our city contributed to Uber rides? You know, if you're above, under a certain level, then our city would provide you with that type of service.
Yes, infrastructure is an issue throughout our District One, and particularly as we're talking about Jolton. The city may need to increase the flow rate that's going to Jolton. The pipes need to be upgraded. A lot of infrastructure needs to happen in District One. In our neighborhood, we toured the area. I went in ditches and trenches and all over in order to prove where the trouble areas were and got a three-million-dollar stormwater drainage project to mitigate flooding. Is that enough? No. We have flooding all throughout District One, and the infrastructure needs to be upgraded. And that's the point that I'll make on that. As far as we go, we have neighborhoods that have dead-end streets or stub streets that were designed to be open to connect them to other neighborhoods. Some bus routes are not able to travel through those parts of the neighborhoods because they can't get through. So, we need to visit that and see if we can open to make sure we have transit all throughout the neighborhoods.
Infrastructure means that uncomfortable situation for our community, which most of the times, some of the complaints I've heard is, with the new development that's going on with the road that's going through Clarkson Highway, it's the complaint of the time that it takes. On my property, they recently was putting in a gas line that ran through there, that what didn't benefit the district at all is going to another district. So, when you look at, like, some of the infrastructure things that actually need to be done in our community, one, Jolton with their water pressure issue. Also, another issue is that you have different problems with sanitation, with garbage delivery, garbage emptiness. Some people in the rural areas don't have garbage disposal. We still suffer on West Hamilton with this garbage issues and things like that. So, we have to set some things and things in place, excuse me, to work better with the government in terms to make sure that these things are properly assisted with.
I was just sitting here thinking, if you could really, like, die and come back, our District One would be the place you still recognize because it hasn't changed. It hasn't changed in forty, fifty, it's still pretty much the same. So, we're, we're really kinda like in the red, in the negative, just trying to get our head above water. And there's so much we have to address. I was thinking about public transportation. We didn't have it on Drake's Branch forty years ago, we don't have it now. We just have so many issues that need to be addressed. But what I would seek is economic parity between, you know, within neighborhoods, like Bordeaux wants what East Nashville has, you know, the same economic advantages. Jolton wants the same economic advantage as Bellevue. We all paying the same tax rates, you know? So, that's, I'm sorry, that's what I would seek, economic.
Thank you, District One candidates. I hope that you have found it really informative, and now, we're going to pass it over to Erica for the closing.
Thank you, thank you so much. Y'all can, you can leave your mics on the chair, I think, if you wanna come down and join us. We'll wrap quickly so folks can be out by eight o'clock. And then, again, thank you so much to Pastor Marble and Jefferson Street Missionary Baptist Church for allowing us to use the space. Yes, please give them a hand. And thank you again to each candidate who has joined us. If folks who are also in the, in the audience with us who are running wanna just stand and give us a wave so we can recognize you. Yes, thank you so much for coming. Folks who are running also wanna stand up and let us know you're running. Thank you, thank you again for joining us. And so, again, we have a mayoral forum on Saturday at one o'clock at Pleasant Green Baptist Church, right down the street on Jefferson Street, that I hope that folks will join us. We're, again, gonna try to ask the questions that really get to the, you know, policies and programs that can impact our community. Thank, thank you again so, so much for coming. I do hope you'll stay in touch, and I hope that, you know, you'll use your pins to vote in August, and that you'll, you'll wear your Black Ballot Week pins when you join us in August to also vote in this local election. Thank you again, and I hope and pray that y'all have a beautiful night. Thank you for coming, see you soon.